From the last meeting.
I'll make the motion.
I did.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good.
Do you want me to zoom in?
Yeah, I can play it through.
Seems like a tough way to work.
Yeah, it's nice to know I can drive anyway, just doing it, staying in the office and things, but it's, it's tough, it is tough.
Blue Wave Solar. First time this gentleman.
Okay, can we all say?
Yeah.
Um, Richard Keel from Field Engineering, Richard Keel from Field Engineering, on behalf of Blue Wave, um, Soler. Um, this is a, we had presented this previously to you guys, uh, before that the plan, I didn't refer to your consultant to review the wetland lines on the site. Um, it's a 3.9 megawatt array, um, on two parcels of land. The northern parcel is owned by Cabral, um, the, uh, uh, the squash farm here. And the southern parcel is, um, owned by Joey Racy. Um, there's some minor work within the buffer zone on both pro- on both parcels. And that's why I wrote before the commission with an order of intent. There's no equipment or gravel access roads, um, or anything to that effect within the buffer zone. Strictly some, um, land clearing, tree clearing and stormwater management features on the southern array. Um, the, the plan before you was being reviewed and approved by the planning board, uh, through the site planning review and special permit process. And we had continued conservation commission hearing so that they could go out and look at the resource areas. I believe we have an email from them that we addressed all of their concerns with the existing conditions plan. That's within that plan set there. The last meeting outstanding was just that we have it stamped by the professional manager there, which that hot copy does and I had emailed it to you and to Marty, um, months ago now.
I talked to Marty and she said she would find they weren't planning on sending one of you to, uh, the hearing.
So with that, I, I didn't take, you know, any questions from the board. I know it's been a while since.
He said that you were going to trim trees.
Yes.
Uh, well, that, that's just a nice general statement, trim trees, uh, uh, where and how and, and how, into the buffer zone, uh, how extensive?
We, we are expecting a 50-foot no-touch within the land, uh, buffer zone. There's approximately, um, an acre within the 50 to 100 feet that would have trees be cut. Um, and it's mainly in this area here. And a lot of that's associated with the stormwater management system as well. This whole parcel here is, is, um, is already open field. We're making use of the fields.
Where's the bucket list, uh, the barn, will that picture there?
The, the Cabral's barn is up there. That's what you see from Tremont Street.
Okay, all right, that, that's the barn, you say?
And this is, um, this is Middle Street here. Um, that's his, yeah, that's his, his big barn. Just to clarify a little bit, um, refresh the commission's recollection. This is being, um, proposed as a dual-use solar array. The northern array, they're going to continue to farm, um, crops, either butternut or some other types of crops beneath panels. And on the southern portion, the southern array is going to be a.
Help me out a little bit.
Yes.
How are they going to do butternut when you put in your solar panels?
The, the spacing, the spacing on the panels is such that it gets enough sun between, there's like 16 feet of road spacing between the rows and they're, they're set higher than the typical solar panels. So the sun does get through, um, they've, they've developed, they actually worked very closely with, um, with UMass, the agricultural people and, uh, MDA, the Department of Agricultural Resources.
That, that stretch of open land entails how much land, how much?
This here.
Well, where on the land?
It's 14 acres on Cabral's property.
Yes.
Uh, that's, that's what's going to be planted within the fence. And there's another six acres on Joey Rancy's property, which is actually going to be grazed with, uh, small animals, um, on that property beneath the panels once again. It's the, it's the, what the state is really pushing is to get these dual-use projects as opposed to just typically just go in, put panels in and leave.
Yeah, they'll keep the grass out of the way.
On the south, yeah, on the southern array, correct. The wetland resource area related impacts of the design stormwater management system to offset the change, a portion of this parcel is wooded, um, which is going to be converted to pasture down in this area here. And there's a small portion on Jim's parcel, um, in this area here that's going to be converted to additional crop land. So would that change from trees to, to pasture or crop land, it's a, uh, small increase in the rate of the runoff, which is what the detention basin is, is proposed for.
Is the, is the detention basin, uh, in the buffer zone or is it outside the buffer zone?
It's in, it's in the outer buffer zones, probably 75 from the wetland, this isolated wetland here.
Uh, isolated or vernal pool?
It's not a vernal pool. There is a vernal protection on the, on the property. It's, it's, it's over in this area somewhere. It shows up on, if you go to, uh, sheet EC1, I think it's the cer- the third sheet.
Yeah.
Um, in that. It's a, it has an EC. Cause that was one of the things that Beta had asked.
I know where it is, it's way away.
Way down here, Beta had asked about that as well.
Okay, something else, the property, quote unquote.
Definitely.
I was out there walking it with a fellow who was hunting it. Um, this, uh, go ahead. All those blue squares, I can't, you got stuff written in them that I cannot see or see?
Oh, you see that? Yeah, it's just a call out, if you go to the next sheet in that, in that context, that's what those blue squares are, it's all the labels of where the fence is and the erosion control.
Okay, all right, okay, I see it, yeah, okay.
Just so you can tell, on this square, the yellow streamish line is the aluminum work area. That would be, um, erosion control, hay bale, silk fence, or silk, um, waddles and silk fence, whatever the, the commission prefers. We have a crushed stone, uh, acre, um, construction access pad at Tremont Street. Um, we will have to file the coverage under the midpiece construction general permit because this is a fairly ownable nature. And, um, the only gravel road on the site is what's running down the middle. Everything else will be planted with either crops or grass.
That's your access road?
Correct, yes.
You're going to come in through the farm on Tremont?
Correct.
I may know where you should.
Tremont Street.
Tremont.
Correct.
Yeah.
And we have two turnarounds for emergency purposes.
Okay, what is, is, is a dark area right here, right after one of the turnarounds, right here?
This is here.
Yeah.
That's, that's green space between the two arrays.
Okay.
There's a stone wall in there that they want to, they're going to retain between the two arrays, um, that demarcates the, the two properties that break into through that stone wall in, in one spot here for the road and then, uh, another spot over here just to be able to get around on that side.
Everything not on that, I'm going to call it the dark line, stone wall, that is Cabral.
That's Cabral.
Everything, and then to the south of that is, uh.
Ray C, Joey Racy.
Ray C.
Can you see the panels from Middle Street as you drive in?
No, no, the front, along Tremont Street, we're proposing a three-foot earthen burn.
You go up middle.
Up, up middle here as well.
Right there, right there.
Yeah, we, we're wrapping that burn around here until you get enough vegetative cover. There's going to be a three-foot burn with a solid wood fence on top of it with plantings in front of it to, to, to dress up the front door. The intent is to not be able to see that for many, for many, and we, we covered that in depth with planning board, uh, number of meetings, site visits with Abutter as well as their consultant.
What kind of vegetation are you going to plant?
Uh, along the front, it's going to be cedar plants, um, red cedars, that would be screen, screen plants in front of the, um, in front of the fence. Then, then also this area here is going to be, um, planted with a pollinating metal of, um, bioth thousands such that provides some habitat or maybe additional agricultural land.
Now, is it set in the contract that these two landowners must farm it? No, it's in solar operation.
That is part of the state requirements that it's going to be maintained as an agricultural use that underneath the panels. That's part of the, the state solar, um, it's called SMAC program now. It's the next iteration of the solar credits program. Uh, but yes, that's, that is a requirement. And they've got a number of local farmers, I guess, that they've spoken with, uh, Cabral's, to do like different types of plots or different things possibly on there. But it does have to, the, it does have to remain in agriculture. They can't just, they can't just let it go and have it be a field and not be active. There's a lot of reporting requirements to the state, you know, with the activity that's being done on that.
Those requirements don't involve the second portion?
They, no, the, the second, I mean, they, they, they consider the grazing operation of the pasture. That's also part of the dual-use aspect of it. You can have grazing livestock type of activities or, you know, um, farm, plant and, you know, vegetation, uh, food stock, you know, food stock. Um, you're not just going to plant turf, you know, it's, uh, a little bit of everything they can do.
Where would the connection be with the local utility?
The connection would be in the utility pole up on Tremont Street. There'll be undergrounds.
Both?
There are, there are, it's all there from the center of underground, there'll be three poles. We are finding four poles here to bring it overhead, but the majority of the connections underground from the pad here.
You're going to dig up that new road already?
No, nothing's, nothing's getting dug up on Tremont Street, it's all overhead. And in fact, the site contract will likely have to post some sort of bond or something, given the fact that that road has been, you know, recently begun to, you know, protect, protect towns and trusts. But that's really a, a planning board, uh, construction base issue.
Now certainly, th- these panels produce the greatest amount of energy in the summer months.
Correct.
Uh, compared to the summer, what would, uh, December and January be like, percentage wise maybe?
I mean, it, I would say you're probably looking at still like 60 or 70%, I don't think on that exactly. The thing, this, this system, most of the systems you've seen now are fixed panel, they just stay in one spot. These are actually, you see that they're aligned a little differently than the other ones. They're running north, south and they're tracked it, so they follow the sun from the morning to the night. And they're much more efficient than the, than the regular fixed tilt panels. Yes, yeah, and these, I believe the bottom, they're, they're dual sided, I guess, and you actually get some, some, uh, production from the under, underneath the panels as well.
Okay, lift still.
There's not a whole lot of issues, but we, as a conservation commission, can look at it, you know, except for the dual-use end of it also.
Correct.
Yeah, only where those, that tree turn is going to be in the, uh, runoff.
Well, they always do, anytime you put a solar panel system in, you got to trim the trees on the, on the side.
Either that or, or you back it off, uh, away from it.
You know, this, so we did our best to respect the, like I said, the 100-foot with any equipment or, you know, any of the, um, the actual equipment of the array, try to keep the earthwork to a minimum within the buffer zone. And also we respect the 50-foot, um, no disturb line basically for the wetlands. There's nothing being done beyond within 50 feet of the, of the wetlands on site.
Jack?
Oh, it's, uh, seems like it's all there though.
Shall we?
No questions?
I'm sorry.
Okay, I make the motion.
Oh, oh, there's a woman over there that wants to speak.
Mr. Jim, may I address the gentleman?
Absolutely.
I think it's you, uh, selected, but I'm here tonight as chairman of the stormwater committee.
Correct.
Uh, we were expecting someone to contact us, you've got a people with stormwater committee who have a land review. Is that you or someone else?
No, it would, it would be us, and we're, we're in the process of getting the, the application put together. We did apply for the first half, uh, Cabral's, um, and Todd, uh, had advised the planning board that it would be a modification for that approval for Joey Rancy's, um, and that is what coming.
Okay, and what you're going to bring to the stormwater committee is the entire project?
Correct.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, I mean, the first half was already presented to the committee, at least the application was submitted and, and then they, during deliberations on the first half, Mr. Seem's project became part of, became part of it. So, yeah, we have planning on submitting that and that's on our next list of things to get into, to, to Todd. Does, uh, does he like the filling?
He's the health agent, he's also a member of the stormwater committee, yes, is Mr. Burnett, stormwater committee too. Uh, the other thing was, the, the two ladies who made a presentation to the board's delight room.
Yes.
At our last meeting, we had requested sample copies of pilot agreements.
Okay.
And there hasn't been any response and, um, our administrative assistant mentioned to me today that since I was coming to this meeting, if I would just remind somebody.
I'll tell, that was, um, um, Jackie from, from Blue Wave here, I'll make sure she knows. I have a call with them every Friday and we'll, I'll make sure I bring that up to them tomorrow.
Okay, the stormwater committee has scheduled a meeting, uh, just beyond mid-August. So it's important that you get in touch with Mrs. Grasson and water help.
Okay.
So if, if you don't make that agenda, it's going to be September.
Okay.
All right?
Yeah, that, that, we do, like I said, we do have that on our list of things and, um, Jackie had mentioned that you guys have brought that up as well, so.
Okay.
And we, we, yeah, we were aware of it, so we have no problem with that.
Okay, thank you.
Are you here for this hearing?
I don't know, 7:30 is what my paperwork stated, 7:30, um, for 00 Maple Swamp.
No, this one, no, no.
Another, another, another single, sorry.
Later in the agenda.
Okay.
Okay, James.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we accept the proposal of initial and order of conditions.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
You're all set?
Thank you very much.
I bet it was nice to meet a brilliant person for once, it's been, it's been a while.
Mark, I just know, I'll, I'll revise later for everything and the names.
What's today's date? 16th.
Thank you.
I'm saying.
Thank you. G. Lopes Construction Incorporated, by the RDA, Singapore, Singapore.
When I posted the hearings?
Yeah. Yeah.
When I told them, huh?
No, no, that's, that's.
I posted the hearings, the public needed.
Yeah.
I, I phased each hearing for half an hour, just in case we had an overflow of public, because we're limited to 10, now we're limited to 13 people, well, there's five, four here, five, seven, or six.
Good, right.
But then I go to community, it's at 7:30.
Right there, right there, that's G. Lopes, all that.
Oh, that's G. Lopes.
I'm not G. Lopes, I'm helping them with what's going on.
We realize that, okay. Representative G. Lopes Construction.
Charlie, I'll go get him, Charlie, sit down.
They're up there, I think there's one more person, are you Andy? No.
Andy?
Not Andy.
No, Tammy.
Okay. One more person, here's G. Lopes. You have my room to your block and you can come in.
Oh, that's what we're wondering if I had to step out or.
I wanted to catch hold of it.
Actually, I'm still in. We can get it out of there. Is it my friend here? I have 11 by 17 of the design plans that I have in mind.
Oh, you could, uh, okay, you've got the, uh.
One of the education, right?
Yes.
I still have 11 by 17 of the design plans, I think I might have looked and have that.
I would believe it. Charlie, you've got the Abutter notifications? Abutter notifications, you've got that and the advertisers?
The building is satisfied, it should just be.
Okay.
This is the same plan we presented before, which is some other cases?
Yep, the main requirement is that we coordinated with the, um, the fire department to provide fire access. They did not require a 20-foot paved, um, driveway, um, so what's shown on the plan is approved by the deputy chief, Maga.
He did not require a 20-foot?
He did not, so what's shown on the plan is what we showed to him and what we worked out with him is a 12-foot driveway with a 4-foot, uh, lawn to be maintained on our side of the driveway that's at the same grade, so it's drivable. Um, and the turnaround area has been done for their specifications, that's going to be a grass cover. It's a little more aesthetic cohesion for a single family house, a little, you know, commercial. And he's approved that and, uh, the insurance, insurance radiology of the driveway, the trust is coming out of what they're doing, and that's what we're showing them. So, um, he has looked at this latest time.
Okay, uh, as I'm looking at this, um, your driveway is outside of the buffer zone, correct?
No, so this yellow line is the 100-foot buffer zone. The inner yellow is the 25-foot buffer. So the house and the subject system and the majority of the driveway are outside of the buffer. This portion here is again 100-foot, um, the closest distance is about 47 feet, which is close to where it turns into me this one.
On my map, it shows that the buffer is completely out of the buffer zone.
Yep, that's the, uh, this end of the driveway. We had split into two different.
Oh, all right, okay.
So right here is the connection to the Maple Swamp, it's a very long road.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, sorry, so you were looking at this portion only there.
Okay, I, I see it, I haven't gotten there yet.
Confuse me for a second, that's why I did this presentation.
Okay, so you, so you're filing for this portion, I get it.
So that front portion of the driveway.
Okay.
Yep, and, um, the form A showing this as the inventory for the first by the planning board. And the second, we're going to guard it on the first by the planning board.
We haven't been filing for G. Lopes for a whole construction in a long, long time. How do we know? Beautiful, it's something a lot bigger.
So is this the only home that you're constructing on that block?
No, so there was a form A to split this real large lot into two, so this is the second home I have. Uh, that was completely applied and stepped off the ground.
And the reason that you're wondering that black light, uh, was illuminated, at least one of the lots is going to be a family. Oh, sorry. At least, at least one of the lots is going to move up, that's why I.
For the family?
Yes. Uh, Gary's side.
Oh, oh, all right. Uh, Charlie, when we were talking earlier, that was, uh, you, uh, Jackie too, that property was, was Old Wellington, is that where we were dealing with? Are they doing anything up where the golf course used to be?
Jim? I, I have a question there.
Uh, so where, where the golf course, what was, um, there's well, there's one named Subdivision, which is off Cedar, the entrance is on Cedar's side. And then on the Wellington side, uh, we actually, I, I, we planned for the back, uh, getting the first two, um, estate lots permitted in Dayton, which also went to move down.
Okay, is that's ready to go or, or pretty soon?
Oh, no, we, they just.
Oh, they're, they are built, okay. No, the only reason, uh, I asked is that when, when they were talking about it for a year or two ago, they talked about excess land and weapons and what they were going to do with it.
Um, and right now it's considered part of the common area or in Subdivision. I don't know, it's, it's, someone is so far removed, I don't know what the ultimate, the HOA will want to do with it. I don't know, some of it is so far removed, I don't know what the ultimate, the HOA will want to do if it turns over to that. If it's something that sounds interesting, I could certainly be happy to talk to them, actually, in regular budget, maybe.
It was a general awful lot, that's what it was.
Okay.
Just, just, I just asked out of curiosity, something to my mind when I saw you coming together. Okay.
I, I.
We should get back to this lot then.
Okay. Charlie.
You have any questions? The nearest, the nearest the driveway is, if I understand correctly, that's the driveway, and it's clear, right?
Yeah, that's right.
And that, and that's really what this.
That's what this is for, this portion, right?
Okay. No other questions? Okay?
I have eleven by seventeen.
Thank you. We're there here.
I do have a few short questions.
Come right on.
Okay.
Get on the end of the table, yeah.
Alright, this is my first time to deal with G. Lopes. I don't know how to be dangerous, I'm watching the property here.
Why, why are you making that noise?
Cause you got a mask on like a lumbering.
So one of the houses.
Brought my water pistol, too.
That's what we're saying?
Yes.
And you have one.
This lady said.
Is there one that runs?
Yep, that's, uh.
Excuse me. We'd like to be in on this. We'd like to hear what you're saying.
I'm asking them, the houses are allotted on, uh, adjoining my property.
With your property?
On Route forty-four and we are bought with thirty acres.
Okay.
And from when I lived there, twenty-six years now, and when we purchased the property, I've already had an offer from G. Lopes to buy my property because I had them landlocked. Now all of a sudden, the reason I was in Florida, I was sick in the war, so I come home with a registered letter. Uh, my question on this meeting is, is how did it get unlocked? Because for sixty years, no one's ever been able to build on this parcel that's had owner after owner buy it, could never develop it, and then they sell it, and they farm it because they under farm tax and there's some residential taxes because it's not residential property. Now all of a sudden, the richest man in our town, all of a sudden is going to be able to build on this property, and that is one of my concerns. How did they unlock my land? When did it happen and why was they not notified?
We, we, we take care of the wetlands.
And he did come in and do a survey that abuts my rental property on Route forty-four, turn the side of my residence, and there is wetlands there, it's all tagged and all, and he still made me an offer because he could not get into that property without that easement that comes in off of forty-four. So that was my concern, how did that happen? When did it happen?
I have no idea about that.
So that's how I handled it. No, I did not, it's his land, and I just abutted it, and then I get this registered letter and they're now to come in because they want to build two houses. Number one, when they heard that, they were literally sopping up with the backhoe, flowing the water out of the perks, and I'm like, oh my god, so.
No, well, I knew I hurt it last summer, not when I was there, that's not how.
Well, I wish I didn't know it if I knew this was coming to this today, because that's what was happening. You go out there in your boots, I know, like, my cousin's a hunter, I track those fields, I've been there twenty-six years, uh, it's a sopping wet field. Especially when you get close to the, um, armies of the power lines and all that area, which I don't know where that is, even up towards Maple Swamp, it's all puddles in there, wherever that is.
This is like a blowout here, I think this is your property right here, is it triangle shaped?
It comes down right into the power lines.
This is forty-four, this, this parcel. Out of our, it's here.
That's me.
Okay, so that's, so this rectangle represents this new port right here, so that's probably where they're on the earth in relation to the lot. Okay? As far as perks go, yeah, we did have fairly good water, which is why.
Very good water, they were scooping it up and throwing it into the fields.
Well, we weren't perking inside of the water, too, we were perking above it, but.
And then that concerns me, we go about leaching, they have been, my neighbors had, um, a, a leaching field put in, and then it was flooding their basements, and that was on us, just on a purchase of a leaching field they redone over. So, and, and back to the point of it, how did it get unlocked to be able to be developed now? Who undeveloped this property that is developed now? Because there was previous owners, I believe this gentleman, where he's living, she owned that field years ago.
Yes.
She could never build in that field because of the being locked up of my property.
We, we don't, we, we haven't, absolutely.
No, I do, that's who it is, my opinion, because I didn't know we were going to get a turn.
The only thing we can do is regulate wetlands.
Regulate wetlands, is that what you're saying? And is that swamp, um, in the field, wetlands at some point when they're trucking it and they can throw the water out of the bucket? And that's our.
Water, water. Water does not necessarily mean it's a wetland, it just means it's.
Wet.
Wetland is determined by soil analysis and vegetation.
And that all about that property is wetland because it's then tagged as that? Because the property is tagged wetlands from G. Lopes? When he was trying to buy it off the bus, he went all the way down my property line to see if they could come in off of Route forty-four into that lot, because supposedly on the side of my rental property is the easement and wetland going into that field.
Flag white, someone? A lot, that's somebody flagged that wetland area?
Yes.
Who flagged, who flagged it for you?
This was Lisa Howard, the manager, Alaska consultant.
Okay.
I don't know who flagged that kind of stuff.
So, we know who she is.
So she flagged all the way up here, and then it goes a little path here. But that's why the septic field and everything is over a hundred feet away, that's where we have the better soils.
And if I may, this could be out of order in the sense that, um, the, the property has substantial frontage on Maple Swamp, it doesn't have frontage on forty-four. There may have been thought of developing the property using, and, and for different purposes, if it's becoming from forty-four, that may very much change how a property would be used, but the property's always had substantial frontage on Maple Swamp. Uh, and that's why they were able to get a form A lock, uh, and additional land, uh, which is still for the second house lot. I can see why one land might be coming off of forty-four to do something with the property, but the property had access to.
It has a two hundred and fifty feet required frontage?
Yes.
Are you here for this particular?
I live directly across street from that.
Alright, so you're here on this.
Anything they're going to do, that's going to get wet, it's going to fall right in my ass.
You're here for this here, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. And you, did you sign the? Sign and sheet?
I don't need that. I didn't sign a sheet, you're the sir.
If you're asking about frontage, we both have two hundred and fifty, well, the, the one of the wetlands has a lot more than that. This one up front, that's why this property one is kicked out, that was to get the two hundred and fifty. And then that, so it needs all the, uh, zoning and dimensional requirement. So it's more than a lot, and I have the form A, that's going more than two or three.
Now, how, how all of a sudden, sixty years later, we're able to build on this thirty acres away?
No idea.
And everybody's tried to do it. That wasn't important in this town, that was just a regular investment in Dayton, and it always got kicked back to it being landlocked through my property. How do I get back to that subject?
I know, I, 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 I guess I know your concerns, but I don't see that as landlocked, it's going to make the swamp grow, it's nothing.
It was the easement, and is how they stated it. And G. Lopes originally, twelve years ago, is the one that stated it when he come forward with the offer for me to get out of my property, but I had so many family members in both of the dwellings, I didn't take the offer. Do I read it? Absolutely. Do I want to see somebody get in there and, uh, water tables and all that, and put leaching fields in it, trying to screw it up, and then how was it even able to be done, was the question.
Oh.
It's who you know, or how much money you have, or is it that?
Matt Dale's in Spagmoor, Spagmoor.
No, it's like money, twenties.
Is that, well, that's where my next step is.
That's a lying idea, that's a lying idea, industrial overlay district is yours.
Yep.
And where he is here is residential mixed use.
Mixed use into industrial land, once my.
Residential, residential, mixed use. Your accord of this is an industrial overlay district. From this line here, which is below the house, to forty-four. But that's nothing to do with us and wetlands.
Okay, this is strictly wetland, so how do I go about to go to the next level to go on zoning, on how they unlock that easement? I know I'm here, maybe I'm the wrong thing, like I said, I just got into Florida on the set relative.
You gotta go ask the zoning board, board of appeals, they'll help.
Okay.
It's not up to us.
I'm sorry, I didn't know, so I came in. And then walking through the field, because it has been there in our backyard for twenty-six years, it's such a swamp, I'm telling you, my husband shoots there. In my right arm, you walk up there.
There's a reason why they call Maple Swamp Road.
That's right, so.
The house is what? The easement, it's not an easement. So what would the problem be with the easement and this house?
To unlock that land to be able to build in there, supposedly no one was ever able to ever use that as any type of land besides farming. Um, Mr. Eagleson purchased it at one point, his.
The easement itself.
The easement to free up that land out back, is what I was telling.
It was clearly shown on this plan, and this house has more effect on that easement. I wouldn't say where it's from, the house is below where you have easement.
How do I get all those maps that you have, go to the town hall, or are they even open to purchases?
This is drawn up, this map right here is drawn up for this project.
Can I just give her a copy?
Alright, so that's the same map that you guys are.
Well, they have, the town hall has the, uh, a lot of map, like.
Of my, no, no, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm wasting your time, I just have to ask these questions, because I'm not familiar of what's going on now, so.
There you go. No, I can read you what.
Um, I was just curious on all these questions, because I just couldn't see how this was happening. That's why I'm here tonight, I, I do understand it's a wetland concern, but.
We, we, we've worked with this lady of, uh, the flagged wetlands for, for, uh, UPE, well, at least in California. She's, she's pretty strict, and she, uh, you know, she, she knows what she's doing.
We approved wetland line that we drawn, but now he bought the property. We approved that line. Okay. Years ago, we bought the property, responded to it, I'm used.
I know, I've been, I've been, these years, I hope time goes by fast.
What does this drainage easement consist of?
So the.
It's on, it's on the lower leaching.
On the lower lot, so we believe?
Is there, I, I, I think, I'm there.
So we believe it's from the house on the other side is discharging to the wetland. So the plan that you're seeing is for the larger lot, because that's the one with the wetland, but I have the approved plan for the, or you can even see it here. So this is the small lot, there's no wetland, but it's called a twenty-foot wide drainage easement, so we think it's this lot, um, there's some, there's some, uh.
And I know, the question doesn't appear on any of the deed, it doesn't appear on the section of the plan. Uh, that was drawn by, I believe by Eagleson, and shown by, uh, the manager who drew the plan. Showing that, it doesn't appear on some of the.
So it says cellar drain from house approximate location, and then the easement was drawn on based on that.
So there's no piping, no, nothing there, or?
Nothing on easement, nothing on the, the original plan before that was looking to the field.
Well, I, I, I found it here on the map. What, what was the papers, anybody know?
Part of what, the easement?
It says that it's a cellar drain easement from the house on the left. That's what it says on the nineteen ninety-two plan.
It says it on one, it's two, right?
Yeah, on the, uh, the lot one plan, the smaller lot. There's only a cellar drain.
So that's all that is, is up there.
That's what I'm working on.
And they're really not disturbing me to talk. It's still there, and almost untouched, except for the gray.
So what do you have to do in order to protect that easement?
The cellar drain easement, nothing, this design doesn't affect it at all, it's also a farm.
No, no, this, you, your driveway goes over the easement.
Over here, sorry, I tried, yes.
So what do you have to do to protect that wetland easement?
There is nothing, right, and as far as.
That's an interesting question, because there's no deed that even references easement, it's just shown on a plan. So if, if there is in fact a, a subterranean pipe that comes from that house and goes across this property to, if it looks like it terminated in, like, old in the nineteen ninety-two plan, it terminated the road, I, I guess we build over it.
Okay. So there's, there's nothing visible, there's no, uh, cop, trees?
Pipe under the driveway.
What was that?
Pipe under the driveway.
That's what they're saying, might, they don't know.
I, I did grab up there, I don't see anything.
There's nothing you can see, when you get into the woods, there's no bear in there, there's no animals in there.
Okay, no changes in tree size or?
No, no, and our survey, it's surveyed on that bottom lot, because we located the wells for septic, so if they notice anything on that lot, they have access to that lot. Because we had to get the well location and have a septic distance. Septic at that.
Are there any plans for a retreat lot, and how does that affect the wetlands here?
Hey, can you hold up a little? Okay.
Are, are there any plans for a retreat lot, and how would that impact the wetlands?
Well, this, this is exactly where we were proposing to build the house, and.
Are there any plans for a future retreat lot, for an additional structure at some juncture after the houses?
Just, no, just these two houses, we would not be looking for those.
So they would take up the entire fill of these two houses?
Yes.
That seems like an awful big waste of land for two houses.
Well, if there's substantial wetlands on the property, that would probably prevent us from having a third house lot on it.
And where that road is, it abuts the wetlands where the turtles and the amphibians live, right by the power lines, and there are eastern box turtles there, which are on the endangered species list, how, how are you addressing that?
The driveway, somewhere outside of, but we're not within the driveway, we're not going across, and there's no map, uh, habitat.
But that, that driveway there is probably about forty feet going to the right of where the gate is on the fence right now. Okay, because that other house there, where you got that mark, that driveway is basically going to spill right into my driveway. Because I live right on Maple Swamp Road, I look at the field constantly.
I don't think the construction of there is turtles, and nothing's mapped or, or designated as habitat.
People walk by the street, there's, there's a large turtle farm there, I've seen the eastern box there before. Have, I'm not sure if I've seen a red bellied cow, it looks like there might be some there, but there's an awful lot of turtles that live in that area.
That driveway, there's essentially no grading for, it's pretty much adro, I don't think it's going to affect when the crossing, uh, you know, have a prevent.
Well, wouldn't that be the determination, not yours?
Yes, I'm giving my hand.
And anything you guys dig up is just going to flow right in my ass, because that's the way the way I go, I've been there eighteen years. Everything drains right in my ass.
Now, you, you just said that you're not going to alter the grade of the driveway.
No, that's why you don't see any proposed grading there, this is it right here. It's pretty, it's pretty flat, you can see that grade. So this is all, there's no grade proposed here.
So in making the driveway, you're going to dig up and then drop in film?
Uh, the pavement, yeah, pavement, yeah, right, yeah.
Take off the top, so.
Yeah.
The closest house to Maple Swamp, MS, where would the leaching field and septic system be located?
There you go. Ground area.
Okay, how far away does that have to be from an existing septic and leaching field?
Septic systems to another septic system, the stepdad is ten-foot high of this property, essentially you could have twenty feet between two fields.
Okay.
You have to have a hundred feet of wells, and that's why we located the wells, hold up right there, um.
Where, where is the well going to go? On the first house, because that's the one that impacts mine the most. Okay.
That's the well. Not really having separation, so septic's are in front, wells are in back.
So there is no egress on Route forty-four right now?
No.
Correct. And you're saying there's well over two hundred feet of frontage there?
There is.
Because when I go home, I can pull out a tape.
Yeah, this has been surveyed, it's been signed by, uh, the professional survey, and approved by. Yeah, this has been surveyed, it's been signed by the professional survey and approved by the planning board, this is the four A, that split this one big lot into these two.
When somebody came down my street two years ago and painted a double yellow line on that, that road did not need code for a two-lane road, it's not wide enough. Just because something happens doesn't mean it's right.
Those are the regulations that we have to comply with, the carrier's only capable to provide him with two hundred and fifty feet of lock on, and then this one's obviously a lot more, and there's a lot ones up front.
And we, we had the road repaved about six years ago, it's already fallen apart, because once they really opened everything up, the construction structures keep coming down the road and destroying it. And now more construction here, it's gonna devastate the road. Which is gonna chew everything up in front of my house, which is gonna have more flow in my yard. Hopefully my three, uh, some homes can handle it. No, no.
It's how much money you have to get your way every time.
Do you have a locus showing this in the old block area? No, okay, I, I have that.
So the two rectangles doesn't mean the two view boards.
Yeah, okay, but that doesn't show, because Maple Street, Golden Street, Maple Street.
Oh, in the front row, I, yeah.
There you go, that, that's, that's.
The area, until I'll do a, if I can go to the easement.
Okay, let's see, so.
I've seen the survey, Jim.
So the bulk field in this, is?
We don't run the border, Jim.
Yeah.
Here.
Okay. And this is to be pulled at right here, I feel over my finger, is? Now, where is, is the cement?
What, what are you looking for?
No, I, I just wanted to get in my head and bring with this one, is where is the cement, where is the cement, um? Yeah, that's, that's right over here. Cement, uh, whatever, what are they, uh?
That, that's like.
All the, all the.
No, no, I, I'm just looking for, I could swivel it. It is, I can see, you're ready, of course, I should make one of them. So you must have left, yeah, that's what I want to get.
Well, sometimes I have a chair, you know, and I wait for someone, and I watch the scholars go through the driveway, because it just needs to watch. What about my lunchbox? I wanna know what's rocking on my phone. Would you rather me go to night vision? Okay. You assume I'm gonna wet your hair. I'm, I'm, I'm.
I think, I mean, they, they have problems, uh, but there's nothing that we do here today that's gonna change anything, as far as Richardson. They filed an, an IDA, uh, they're outside the buffer zone, they remade the plans to satisfy the, uh, fire department. I don't have a problem with this at all. That.
No, the work, the work, but then I have jurisdiction, and they required, didn't really require, so. I have no problem.
And he should be gonna be given a cornfield or, or heat field, but he owns land, he wants to build a house out.
What, you're already making a decision.
You got any more questions for this group of people while you got it?
No, this is a nice way how you give us the finger.
And I want to make one thing clear.
This is a nice way how you give us the finger.
I can't hear.
This is a nice way how you give us the finger.
That's not the case.
We are following the law.
This is a better.
We have regulations, we have to go by. At all, we're not saying anything.
If I, if I, if Joe Schmo tried to, I'd say, man, that's. Really, honestly, because I know it's been kicked back for fifty years to build in that, in that area. That's the chart, and you should know because it's been, like, he's been on board long enough, that, and this has been down the chain before, and they've got that.
Make a motion.
Okay, make a motion. I make a motion that we accept, accept the proposal and issue an order of conditions.
I'll second.
All in favor?
An order of.
I second.
You didn't have a lot.
We did, we have a lot.
I miss me a lot.
This is an RDA.
Yeah, sorry, sorry, RDA.
If there's no conditions, well, we can put conditions on it, if there's some reason we have, uh, it's not recorded. Let's just, I'm just, ready to go.
Well, it's fine, I just need the motion for the order of conditions, I just wanna make sure it's all set.
Okay, that's right, I can re-let it then.
That's all.
Re-let it to the determination.
Yeah. The determination.
Yes.
Okay, then I do, I, I will make, amend my motion to be a made determination. There is second.
Second, Matt?
All in favor? All right, okay, that's, uh.
Thank you, sorry, I just wanted to.
No, no, that's, uh. I was still on the, on previous.
A little discussion, when this had the gate that we hit with the fourteen eight or fifteen eight corner of the pole, the pole was so huge.
They were operating anywhere much less susceptible, I think. Charlie Hope's was the richest guy in that, and not Jack Crawford's, really.
I will say, when I called Charlie to say it's just the driveway, I didn't mention the Hope's, I was asking if we needed to do an RDA or a lot.
It doesn't matter, people, people are jealous, nobody realizes what Sonny Hope's went through. First of all, Sonny Hope spent over eighty years in this town. His son's been here sixty, Gary was here until he died, Paul was in and out of town, that's the way it is. Under me, that's all, there's a lot of them that are jealous of Reed's, they're jealous of Hope's, they were jealous of Mike Barron's, because they were successful business people, so that's the way it is. You know, he says he's been here eighteen years, I've been here seventy. And his house, there was only about three houses left there. There isn't a vehicle out there on the lot that used to be able to go from Maple Street, unless it was a small woolly sheep, that's all. He's got a lot of problems, the town did the road over, all the way from the corner, it makes a turn, all the way down, the drain's coming in. Take it up with the town, that's all. You know?
And you're gonna check on that other property way over there.
I will, yes, it's funny you say that, because when, I had to jump through a bunch of hoops, we did need a state locks, or reserve locks, for the, on, on, on well of them. I specifically went out of my way and made sure that if we did want to donate some of the wetlands in the back, then we could, I had to, I had to actually fight with the planning boards again, the land, the gentleman would allow us to do that, without having to go back to them, and, and have a new plan approved by them, and donated some of the back lot that was there. I was trying to make it easier to donate, and.
Yeah, there was, there was a discussion a while ago, when, uh, I believe there were one about, there's like two houses up there, which.
Two, two houses on the bottom.
Two state locks, so, you know, that was a discussion, like he says, that, uh, there's a chunk up there, sits out towards the power line, and it is pretty wet, so.
Correct, I, I actually reserved it, so it would, it would make it easier if we did choose to donate that, whether, whether our owners come out with some of the parts that's still relevant. But one other thing that, that I found interesting about this, so I do the sixty-one eighty five for, for Maple Swamp every year, for the, the taxes, and so now I have it as something residential. Bill Hope's lives on the park, he does not, will not buy a sixty-one eighty for his own house, and he gave the full on the taxes on this property.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Yeah. So we live on the park, but he won't put in sixty-one eighty, make the full on the taxes. Right?
Well, take it out of sixty-one eighty, we get the whole life now.
That's right. That's right, he, he's never.
No, no, I mean, on this one.
That's fine, right.
Yep, you already did that. Uh, I just, I just paved it out.
Unless they do it when it ends. Unless they do it when it ends.
Unless they do what?
When it ends.
Oh, I see.
And I decided, well, it used to be five years, now you're gonna sign up for ten.
Yeah.
When it comes to renewal, if you don't renew it, we don't get it.
I think Eric wants to get it sooner, so.
Yeah, no, no, it's, uh, that way, so.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
I don't think, uh, Duatt's not out there, is he, Charlie?
What?
Duatt, he wouldn't be out there.
Scott can think, he's not, am I hearing you, so?
I do.
I haven't got the trouble with things it is.
Duatt's not out there.
He is, he's stuck right in the ZI. What's that?
Duatt is not out there, right?
There's no, no other, uh, no, he's not coming in.
Okay.
So we're out. He could have been thinking of something else, buddy.
Yeah. That house is so far away from this, that the house that we built with is probably a thousand feet away from them.
Well, it's seven hundred feet from the road.
Well, and then there's the road, and then his house is down the street one, so if I said a thousand feet, then, and.
And we have nothing to do.
That's being generous.
And we have nothing to do with the small lot, because that's.
Already done.
Yeah. Okay, Charlie, we're on Duatt. Okay, well, we're gonna, um, lift the enforcement order.
It's not, I'm concerned, I.
I know.
It appeared that he did help him that he was supposed to, to get the community cost, the community cost, and by the way, the shop, the wall, rented the, the, the grassy area.
Charlie. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm a site visitor, uh, he had actually more than I thought he would do.
Well, we were saying, we, we really told him to bill.
Was the detention line he put in the back behind the, the house, all the water flows down the hill, catch it right in there. Then he's got a stone to cover it, got a steel fence, he rebuilt the driveway all the way down, right to the edge of that little, of, swear, he said, here's your driveway. It's stone, wall.
No, I know who were there, Charlie, I mean, you, you really told him to bill, and, uh, if I may, I would like to make the motion to lift the enforcement order, but remind him of his conditions that he has to continue.
We mentioned at the site visit that he's still responsible for whatever.
Well, I know, but that's what I'm saying, okay, so I made the motion.
Yeah, I'll second.
I'm in favor of.
Yes, I'm in favor, aye.
I'll send more about, lifting the enforcement order and rescating the fact that anything he does there, we have to put some basic barriers on.
In you are.
What he's concerned with right now is his septic system. And that's on the one, the other side of the road, but still, it's, it's gonna be digging in the ground, and the experience that he constructed, and he agreed to put a steel fence around the thing before he started digging.
Yeah.
And we'll just have to make sure that he, he does.
Okay, I guess we're moving on.
Well, we back the full, full wood, it's under that. Now, we've got a couple of, uh, statistics or complaints, so. One is we, uh, fully given the roadway along, uh, Chestnut Street, and the other one is Tony Roberts' house signed by the, by the Williams. The septic system's constructed, the wall's in place, uh, all of that is done.
What, huh, what, the corner?
Yeah.
He bypassed me on that one, Bill. No, couldn't wait, they say couldn't wait, he sold out on over the Y, so it's gotta come back, yeah.
All right, you don't have to read it, just slide it.
No, no, I know, I just, uh, this is the file. Oh, it's, I'll take it, we'll have that.
Yeah. It's an R O W, Charlie.
Well, I didn't print up, uh, all the other stuff that's on the agenda, because of, uh, my computer might break it down, one is on the way, but it's not in there. But National Grid is going to, uh, do some strain on the right of it. If it's required, they want to have their people check what work that was done during the winter, and if there's any rework, the contractors responsible for going back and, and do it. It's backpack, mat sat type strain.
Oh, okay.
And they have a right to do that, so that's one of the things. The second one is, uh, we've got, uh, the water condition to be issued to Cleary, and, uh, hell, I get with it together, man, that built the houses, uh, building houses up on Maple Swamp Road, it's County Street Gold, it's, oh, John Devell. The water conditions require them to notify us if any change in ownership. Uh, DeJali has two lots to be sold and transferred to other people, and, like, the names of them that.
Yeah.
And Cleary has one, he's, uh, developing a lot on Maple Swamp Road. The next one is, uh, Conservation Mass, uh, Mac. You don't have money if you wanna keep our, uh, and it needs to be signed, that's in. The front and the back, and all the page, the one page in the back that's supposed to be an invoice.
Another page in the back? Did you say?
Yeah, I think the front page of the MAC would take care of it. No, just lift up the, the second page down is the one you had, so.
Anywhere?
Anywhere.
Charlie, this County Street, County Street Holdings.
That's John DeVal's property.
Oh, okay, all right. John Prairie?
Isn't it? Gay, gay. We owe him some money from the land transfer for the assignments.
How much?
Hundred and twenty-eight dollars. It's listed right on the...
Hundred eighty-one ninety-nine.
Back page, true.
Nothing on that one?
That's the one, right there.
Okay, do we have to pay? Do we have to vote to pay our dues?
We have to vote.
Okay, then let's, I make a motion that we pay our Mac dues. What?
A few seconds. So all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Chuck. If you think I can, if you think I can, here, step right here, please.
Okay, the Titan Yard Club doesn't have to do anything because it was in their deed to dredge the Titan Yard Club? Okay.
Or they recording?
For MAC.
You already did.
Make the motion anyway.
You already did.
We did. Okay. This one just needs a signature. I don't know what the hell it's all about, but...
Make a trail out of signatures, Chuck.
Yeah. He stole them on eBay, though.
Okay.
And making money off of them.
Something to do with a computer that they got from the planning board. They've got a new computer. We've got the old one, and they had to fix it and go ahead.
Okay, do we need a motion then to pay Gay?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we pay Gay, Gay, one hundred eighty-one dollars and ninety-nine cents
I'll second.
for services owed them. All in favor?
Aye.
We have now the one out from Peter Group. We've got to build for Marty for four thousand one hundred and forty-two dollars and eighty-two cents for what they did on the blue wave solar.
This, okay, this comes out of that, the file.
Fifty-three G account.
The what?
Fifty-three G account.
Fifty-three G.
And a hundred thousand dollar account for that.
Okay. We're going to, I'll make a motion then that we sign the invoice for to pay Marty four thousand one hundred twenty-four dollars and eighty-two cents.
All in favor?
Aye. I make a motion that we authorize Bill to sign the payroll voucher for Charlie.
Jim, is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next one is the last thing I need, Jim. It's Nitro Spec LLC. Apparently did a ton of work for the Tummin' Diten. I guess it did everybody's duty. We got to get six thousand dollars worth of work. We owe two hundred and fifty dollars out of this total invoice from Nitro Spec LLC for setup and update of Conservation PC.
And where is that computer?
And that's two hundred and fifty dollars.
Where is that computer?
I don't know where it is. It's not in our office, that's for sure. It was the planning board's. I'm sure it's around here somewhere.
We don't know anything about it. Should we pay it?
Yeah, we should pay it. We're going to get a computer. What he did was rehab. I think he loaded all the tons of computers.
Okay, is that, is that the one that's downstairs? Is a small house downstairs? Okay. I move that we pay the two hundred and fifty dollars to Nitro Spec for our computer work.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye. All in.
Charlie, I want to go back to the first page. We got two notice of intents and a request for determination on August meeting.
What's that?
We have...
Oh, that's just information. That's the next meeting.
Yeah.
One is Smith Street, last lot of the home division. And I forgot to put Peter Benven in there, too.
He's a, Peter Benven is here, right? Plaza Street.
Yeah.
Not a lightbulb, aren't you, Paul?
Yeah, the lunch hall. They won't put it in until we approve the, but that's the next meeting.
Okay. Okay, so we got three items for next meeting, I agree.
Yeah, I'll be here. I don't look like I'm going fishing in Alaska anymore.
Why not?
When I fly in here, I got to quarantine for, I got to quarantine for two weeks.
It's private.
No, no. No, when you cross the border. You got to quarantine for two weeks, then I can fish for a week. And when I come home, I got to quarantine for another two.
I don't think I've seen three or four vehicles with Alaska plates on in the last ten years. In the last few weeks, I've seen fifteen different vehicles with Alaska plate.
Really?
Yeah. I mean, it's like, and they're legit, too. You know what I mean? They go to a slide.
I mean, Alaska evidently is, doesn't have much COVID.
No, they don't want it. They don't want you to bring it in, Jim.
Yeah.
Hey.
Maybe not. Who's, who would quarantine you? Or is it self-quarantine, like they do here?
What?
Is this self-quarantine or the...
No, no. You've got to stay in hotel somewhere for two weeks when you arrive. Probably in for a trip. It's the only place you can get into it.
Is there anyone that wants to go in here?
Yeah.
Second motion means you're in. Second. All in favor?
Aye.